Welcome to the October 5th Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Take your role.
Trustee Sorensen. Trustee Redd. Trustee Turnquist. Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee McGoan.
Present.
Trustee White. Trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee Saunders.
Present.
The board is present.
We are about to convene into public comment. We're going to do the superintendent's report first, and then we'll go into public comment.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, members of the public that are gathered here this evening. As part of my superintendent's report, I'd like to take an opportunity to respond to some information that I think requires my response. Over the last several weeks, I've been made privy to some defaming and slanderous communication designed specifically to impugn my reputation by knowingly communicating false statements by written and spoken methods, much of which is unsigned by the author, presumably seeking anonymity and avoid legal accountability. Those of you who know me know that I have tried to stay above the political fray and generally do not get involved in the Mount Vernon politics that I know can be quite nasty. I believe this is partly why I have been targeted for this harassing and intimidating tactic. Moreover, it categorically undermines the work of this administration, and dedicated people have made up the superintendent's advisory cabinet, our principals, our teachers, and our staff. In the last seven years, we have improved graduation rates. This year alone, one school with 100% graduation and one with 97%. We have increased college acceptances, tripled achievement rates in ELA and numeracy, made facility improvements in every facility in the district, improved our credit rating, and are in the best fiscal position than we have been for decades. I don't know where these voices were before I got here, but I do know that I inherited a district with deplorable learning conditions, a fractured infrastructure, and achievement data in the single digits. So now I'll respond by some of these baseless claims. My office did not cost $250,000 to rehabilitate. The cost of the office was $57,869.44, which was triggered by a significant mold remediation that was visible and causing me health issues, which I never complained about. Some of the mold was visible. I later found out that there was considerably more mold behind the paneling and on the window seal. Mr. Silver has those receipts and invoices for anyone who wishes to see them, but for board reference, they are marked in your packet as Exhibit A 1 through 6. Secondly, the author suggests that Edward Williams School has been completely overlooked, but they fail to mention what has been done to Edward Williams School and the conditions that were overlooked prior to 2014. This administration, in collaboration with our board, has renovated the cafeteria, floors, ceiling, water fountains, and the bathroom, front entrance site renovations and parking expansion, bathrooms at first and second floor for a total of five, new classroom, science area, new auditorium, new stairwell guardrails, new mechanical upgrades, new emergency lighting, new stair treads, 12 total classroom renovations, including flooring, media center and library renovation, radiator covers at formerly exposed units and damaged units, six areas were converted into small classroom spaces and associated corridor flooring, replaced all water fountains with bottle fill type units, teacher lounge renovation and bathroom, new gym floor, principal's bathroom, assistant principal bathroom, nurses' bathroom renovation, new paving at playground area, and new basketball hoops, a new ganga pit at the play area, repaired sinkhole in the play area, install electrical and AC units in seven of the classrooms to accommodate summer school, and currently in the process of renovating the elevator. The author says it was reported that the superintendent, quote, "pumped thousands of taxpayers' dollars in Thornton High School performances to pay outside talent to his production company," end quote. Not one person associated with my outside endeavors ever stepped foot on the Thornton stage directly or indirectly, and I have never benefited from a single performance. This is an outright lie, and not one piece of credible evidence has been presented to support this claim and never will because it doesn't exist. This is clearly defamation. The letter states the superintendent cut mandated services. I have never directed the elimination of a mandated service. In fact, quite the opposite is true. I have recommended the addition of services like elementary guidance councils in every building, supplemental services, nurses in every building, additional course offerings that go far and above what is mandated in order to enhance the educational experience for our students. The writer conveniently overlooks these facts. I am unaware of any lawsuit against the district in this regard, as the writer states, and for the record, the district is fully insured and pays over $2 million in premium to that effect. It refers to the superintendent's spending as out of control. I suppose on that one I do have to take a hit. I have used other districts like Bronxville, Scarsdale, and my previous district Monroe Township, where, by the way, when I left, had finally made the top 100 school list in New Jersey. This was my barometer for what I thought our students should be getting, and perhaps I have exceeded the expectations of those who clearly think I dream too big and my ideas are too grandiose, but I'm not going to apologize for that. I have never received credible piece of evidence to substantiate that anyone was forced to change a student's evaluation. As it relates to mandated services, that is true, that some of our students whose services are behind. However, it is not because of some professional malfeasance. It is directly related to COVID conditions, student and teacher absences, and need often exceeds our capacity. The Special Education Department is making every effort to make up these related services, and there are occasions when we will need to bring in outside specialists to help make up that difference. Department has undergone a fully external review by an independent evaluator. The department has made effort, particularly in the last several months, to reestablish credibility. Social workers all across the state are overworked. I have never heard of any social worker in our district who has been subject to punishment for doing what they were hired to do. Any claims of punishment of whistleblowers or claims of retaliation should be reported. As it relates to the grievance process, it is a negotiated condition of the collective bargaining agreement marked as Exhibit B 1 through 7. This is the process that the bargaining units agree to, and as such, it is the process we must follow. Whether it is right or wrong, fair or right, it is the guiding process for prospective employees. It is true, we still have tremendous work to do in some of our buildings, and I agree, more funding should be allocated to some of our South Side schools that are older, require greater maintenance and renovation, but the superintendent does not decide where capital project money goes. Boards of education set priorities and superintendents across the state must follow through as director. Boards change, and some have different ideas, and that's the nature of public education. There is no policy or practice that seeks to supplant services provided by employees to consultants or contractors. There are isolated cases where, in order to be in compliance, consultants are engaged to fill in where gaps may exist pending the recruitment and onboarding process. This is a common practice in communities with disproportionate representation of classified learners. As it relates to a slush fund, I do not have a reserve for funds hidden for illicit or political purposes. We have a clean audit and have had so ever since I have been in the district. The board through the budget and audit committees review every line in the budget. I don't even sit on the budget and audit committees. This is another unsubstantiated, inaccurate statement without a single shred of evidence. There is not a single factual artifact that would suggest that there has been an abuse of the civil service law. It is true that the HR department and representatives have had to sit with Civil Service Commissioner to update some practices due to change in leadership in our HR department, but I have never been made aware of any organized breach of the civil service charter. As for Mount Vernon residents, 38% of our employees live in Mount Vernon. I do agree that we can do a better job by removing any barriers that may impede any local residents from getting contracts in the district. While I have no involvement in the procurement process, I will make it my business to be more engaged in the process and have started to gather information to create more opportunities for local minority-owned businesses, if that is what the board wishes and directs me to do. My interaction with the district council is beyond reproach. They are the most credible ethical group of attorneys I have ever worked with. As for the deputy superintendent position, that position was in the district before I arrived. Please see Exhibit C 1 through 5, which includes an email communication from the late Judith Johnson advising me that the position was intentionally left vacant pending the onboarding of the new superintendent. I have also included data relative to how many other districts have that title in their organizational structure. There are 42 districts in the state with the deputy superintendent title. In closing, I have been personally grieved by the assault on my professional integrity, and more importantly, that despite the fact and lack of evidence, someone will inevitably believe this report. This rhetoric has caused damage. This may harm me professionally, and I will not be idle. Hopefully, my sometimes quiet demeanor will not be misread. But what bothers me the most is the insinuation that children have not been my first priority. Quite frankly, I think therein lies the problem. I have been so focused on children that I have not altered my priorities to put adults before children. I thank you for your indulgence, and those who have called to voice your support, and those who have reached out to care for me both personally and professionally. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you.
We are now about to convene into public comment period of our meeting. As mandated by our public participation policy, speakers are required to register in advance by no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person or by phone or by email. There is no legal obligation or requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members of the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to the speaker's remarks. However, it is unlikely that the district representatives will be in a position to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, to the extent of legal appropriate, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have a proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. The board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon educational officials or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through proper administrative in accordance to the board policy. Finally, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility, respect during the public comment, and in the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting until the order is restored. The board will now entertain public comment. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak, up to one minute to finish, to summarize. Thank you. And before we have public comment, I'd like to ask Trustee Sorensen, she'd like to make a statement.
Thank you, Madam President, fellow trustees, and board members. I am standing here to publicly apologize to those board members -- sorry, my glasses, not used to them yet -- to those board members present during our last executive session, especially to Trustee Owen. McOwen, I truly regret my choice of words to express my disappointment, frustration, indignation, and objection to how we dealt with the issue at hand as a board. With this being said, I don't regret my passion. I don't regret my bold statements. I was elected to bring a change to the district, and that's what I'm planning to do. To our audience today, it's okay to be passionate. It's okay to be bold. It's okay to be angry. It's okay to be emotional. It's okay to be strong and assertive, but it's not okay to disrespect each other. So express what you have to say. It's okay to be angry, to be bold. It's okay to be aggressive. It's okay to have emotions. With that being said, thank you, Madam President.
Prior to having speakers come to the podium, our district clerk has some statements written from the public, so he'll read those first.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. To the Mount Vernon Board of Trustees. Good evening, Madam President, and to the good evening, Board President, Board Trustees, Board Members, and the Mount Vernon community. We have a child who attends Rebecca Turner Elementary School in the Autism Cohort Program. We are deeply concerned our child is not receiving the level of special education services he deserves and is eligible for. He has regressed due to the COVID-19 school closure and needs increased services and supports to receive a free, appropriate public education. Additionally, our son attended the extended school year program this past summer. Although he received his ESY services, he did not receive compensatory services that is owed to him. We were contacted by a district staff member, a district social worker, during the last week of ESY. This person informed us she would be providing compensatory services in the ESY program. We asked if the services could be provided when the school year begins, since ESY was ending, and she said yes. It is October, and we have not heard from the Special Education Department about how these services will be made up. There needs to be a system of accountability. If this is happening to our child, how many other children are not receiving their services in ESY and compensatory services? We understand the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic has had a tremendous effect on the academic, social, and emotional needs of our children. The Mount Vernon community was deeply impacted by this health crisis, and many families experienced trauma, lack of resources, and a disproportionate weight of the pandemic compared to other communities and school districts. This is why it is even more critical our children receive their related services, supports, and interventions in order to receive FAP. More needs to be done. We are asking this board and the school district to make a commitment to create a system of accountability. The Special Education Department needs to review services required to provide FAP to a child and determine if the child did or did not receive them during the school closure and other disruptions of service. This information needs to be clearly communicated to parents and how the district will make up services. Finally, we look forward to someone contacting us regarding services owed to our son and a program review to discuss increased related services. Thank you for your attention.
Do we need a motion to -- our usual practice is to only spend 30 minutes on public comment, and I think if the board agrees, we could pass a motion, make a motion to extend the 30 minutes to the time needed.
I make a motion to extend the time needed for all public comments to be finished.
Second.
We have a sec. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Our next letter. My name is Delia M. Farquharson, and I am currently a city council member. I chair the Standing Committee on Human Resources for the City of Mount Vernon. This committee includes matters involving the Board of Education. On several occasions over the past years, I have contacted the superintendent of schools on behalf of families struggling to get services for special needs students. My contact with the superintendent is typically in writing, and I try to always copy members of the school board to encourage a response to these families. In my other capacity, I am a licensed clinical social worker, a member of the New York State Panel of Mental Health Professionals, and a clinician often appointed to help students involved with the Family Court in Westchester County. In that role, I have encountered many students from Mount Vernon who find themselves in juvenile detention. There is always an education component to these cases. Sadly, what often gets revealed are children who somehow fell through the cracks. These students went undiagnosed and unevaluated. Sometimes, the identified services were not provided or poorly provided. In the truly tragic cases, we see parents frustrated and at wit's end, and we find that the disservice spans generations. Parents themselves are products of a broken educational system and the solutions. Today, I am here as a concerned community member who fully understands that we must care for the needs of these students who are often left without agency or a voice to protest the wrong being exacted on them by a system consistent in proving that it does not care. The evidence in the school district points to room for improvement. While there have been incremental increases in the graduation and college acceptance rates, the true measure of a functioning school system is not what it does for some students. Rather, assessment must be based on what it does for the majority of students, especially those most vulnerable, those with the least access, and little to no power. The role of the school board is to hold the superintendent accountable. That is what you are elected to do. The superintendent's job is to ensure that our students are being served well and persons are being educated. The reports coming out of the district are beyond troubling. We hear of educational fraud, neglect, and absolute disregard for the needs of our children. I am calling for change and accountability. Beyond the financial costs, the social costs and the human costs will be significant and will reverberate for decades, if not for centuries. I implore you to answer the call of the moment and respond with urgency to the educational needs of our children. This is a text from a parent who I provided support. Good morning. You are blessings to the family in Mount Vernon. Glad you speak about that topic on Facebook this morning. Remember, my son was took off his special need program he was getting at Holmes Elementary, and I know he still has the need for the help. No one was listening to me. I called you. You get me to sign up with WJCS and sent the to-do test on him in Manhattan, and they found out he has autism, and he's getting therapy with somebody from WJCS. She is one of the best. Mount Vernon City School District is a mess. Thanks a million, Delia. We love you. Signed, Delia M. Farquharson. Dear trustees, I am writing this brief letter to thank Dr. Hamilton for all of his hard work and for all the improvements that have taken place under his tenure as superintendent of the Mount Vernon City School District. The superintendent's 2020 Vision Plan promised improvements to both the opportunities offered to its students and improvements to infrastructure, and the goals have largely been achieved. All schools except Mount Vernon High School are in good standing pre-pandemic. The infrastructure improvements outlined in the 2020 Vision Plan were completed. Neighborhood elementary schools extended to a K-8 model, and the newly refurbished Nelson Mandela Zalikoffa School was converted to an elementary school, relieving the overcrowding at Lincoln School. The Arts Magnet Secondary School, which my daughter had attendance in 6th grade, grew from a 6th to 7th grade program to a full secondary school for students in grade 612. The Denzel Washington School of the Arts, where students pursue both academic and artistic excellence in state-of-the-art facilities, including the Felicia Rashad Auditorium, formerly known as The Wood. Some students there are managing a full course load while performing and presenting their art in competitions. Some talented scholars there are breaking into show business, working professionally onstage and screen while attending DWSA. The first graduating class of 2021 had a stellar 100% graduation rate. The A.B. Davis Middle School was refurbished and converted to the Mount Vernon STEM Academy, where students achieve academic success while preparing for careers in STEM fields. Their graduation rate was very high last year, and their valedictorian for the class of 2021 should be attending Harvard now on a full-ride scholarship. The International Baccalaureate Program was successfully launched at the high school, and the CTE program has been reinvigorated with recently completed renovation of the Culinary Arts Center and course offerings. Arts and gifted and talented programs that have been severely cut were restored and emphasized. This is only a partial list of the improvements to the Mount Vernon City School District during Dr. Hamilton's tenure as superintendent. There is still work to be done, but the work he has done so far is a vast improvement over the district he inherited. I thank him very much for his efforts and look forward to seeing where his vision takes our district next. Sincerely, Elizabeth Smith.
That concludes the written communication.
Okay, so we'll start having the public come to the podium. Rick, can you just announce in English?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker this evening is Mark Stuckey.
Please be mindful that there is, again, four minutes, three minutes to talk and one minute to wrap up. Thank you. Mr. Stuckey?
He's coming down.
Good evening. There was a statement made by the superintendent that you have an audit report done every year.
Can you speak up?
There was a report made by the superintendent, a statement made, that you have an audit report done every year. You do have an audit done every year, but I'm just going to back this up a little bit. At the time Brenda Smith was in office, she left this district in the black with a whole lot of money to fund negotiations across the board. That money was moved around, moved around, moved around so much that the audit just never saw it, and it was hidden. Later on down the road, years later, the money was found. So your report, your audit report, you can do an audit, but if the person is moving the money around, you'll never see it. Last time I came up to the board, I mentioned, it was at the high school, I mentioned about the air conditioning at Thornton, not Thornton, I'm sorry, Mandela. And you said it was being done in stages. Why is it that the principal's office have central air, the nurse's office have central air? When you're putting an AC unit in a building, you want to make sure everything is put in before you put your roof down, so your warranty won't be void. Once you cut that roof, your warranty is void. Next thing is, with that same problem, there was a young student there who called up, and I'm quite sure none of the board members may know this, called up the superintendent's office to put a complaint in. That child was suspended from school for five days because she was hot. That record, when that principal suspended her, that should be taken out of her record. She should not have that on her record, nor should she have been suspended from school. We had a problem not too long ago with the storm, and I know a lot of people got damaged by the storm. I'm trying to hit a lot of things real quick. And what is it? The school on 6th Avenue? No, no, no. The Thornton, thank you. The Thornton, thank you. Thornton School was damaged. Thornton School was damaged very badly on the lower level, which I understand was in the kitchen, the cafeteria area. And then what I saw on the video, it flooded from the elevator all the way downstairs. Now, there was a report made by the STEAM Academy with the teachers and the students. They put a report together saying how they can fix this problem, but apparently it went up on deaf doors, and somebody took and threw it underneath the table and said, "Forget it." Now, we're spending a lot of money out of the insurance to have a repair done. Not only that, but the company who wind up doing the repair renewed. Why is this company getting all the work out of this district? Every time you turn around, renew, 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 it's doing repair. They was the ones who did the work over at Pennington. Isn't that correct? So now, what's happening is the superintendent of Buildings and Grounds is doing something wrong. His hand is in the cookie jar. Not only that, we have over 20, just as a rough, over 28 open positions within the Buildings and Grounds. We get money from the taxpayers and the state. Where have all those, that money have gone? Is the superintendent stealing? We need to look into this. You, the taxpayers, it's time to wake up. You paying all this money. We don't have no money. This pandemic hurt every single and every one of us. So now what's happening is we're getting shafted, and nobody's saying nothing. You appointed those up there to be board members to represent you. You need to go back to like they did not too long ago and get rid of all the board members. Not only that, but there was a superintendent of Buildings and Grounds removed from office for stealing. This guy is stealing big time.
Mr. Stuckey, thank you. Next.
Our next speaker is Dolores Mack.
Good evening. President Saunders, trustees, Dr. Hamilton, administrators, and community. My name is Dolores Mack. I was here for one thing, but I think it's going to be three things tonight. First of all, President Saunders, I want to thank you for getting the sign for our late Principal Sharon Bradley. I had a lot of people to sign it, and I saw the STEAM Academy had signed it and, you know, at her funeral and wait, people were signing it. I thank you. And I want to thank the former Principal Ralph Burts and the former trustee Marlene Dandridge for helping with the balloon ceremony after the funeral. I'm here tonight to talk about the late Sharon Bradley. I strongly feel, and others, that her name should never be forgotten because with Dr. Hamilton trustee's vision, I know for a fact people want to take their kids out of progress school to try to get them into that STEAM Academy. I know that for a fact. After her funeral, I hung around with a lot of people that I went to school with. I was born and raised in Mount Vernon. Across the street from Thornton School, I spent my last first five years on this earth where the teachers parked their cars. I was one in the house there. And I worked for this district for 28 years. I retired in 2013. Dr. Hamilton and trustees, y'all saw that vision, and it worked, the STEAM Academy. I mean, it's beautiful. I strongly feel, we're going to petition y'all, the community, with this, that Sharon Bradley's name should be added to A.B. Davis Bradley STEAM Academy because she has gave so much in her 62 years on this earth. I had the pleasure of knowing her mother. She was an elementary teacher in the early '60s at Grimes, and I was a student there. And she worked too, but I hope that y'all can talk about this. And next month, y'all will be getting petitions from the community that put her name on that building because she should never be forgotten because she's one of the icon administrators in this district. And I personally know her, but not only that, but to let people know that she's a Mount Vernonite, she went through the school system here, and look what she accomplished. And please keep in mind, don't forget our civil service workers. I was a civil service worker in this district from 1986 to 2013. People work hard. I remember we used to have 40 in our unit. I said on negotiation, I remember three times. These people work hard, and they shouldn't be forgotten. I mean, pay close attention to our civil service workers because they work hard in this district and help the school system run. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Mack, the board is planning a tribute to Sharon Bradley at its next board meeting, so hopefully you can attend that.
Our next speaker is Desmond Bonaparte.
Hello. My name is Desmond Bonaparte. I work for the city, have multiple kids in the district. Child I want to talk about today is in the Special Education Department. Just feel like he's being failed. He comes from good family, good support system. He's not receiving a lot of the services he's supposed to receive. A lot of times during the COVID, when they were remote, I felt like he was being singled out. He would be put in a breakout room for no reason when I myself or his mother would question why. We'd call the school, get no response to the point where I had to go down there myself. These children, and they need, all children, but special education especially, they need an outlet. They need the tools to be functioning adults one day that I'm sure there's funding being given, but the children aren't receiving. I like to think that every day I send a complete child on a school bus. But what I do know is that I receive a failed, broken child by the system of Mount Vernon School District back home every day. He doesn't have a male aide to assist him to go to the bathroom. He has, you know, incontinent issues, and a female has to bring him to the bathroom. She can't escort him inside the bathroom to make sure that he's clean. So a lot of times, we'd have to come bring a change of clothes. We've called on this issue, and the answer given was just that there's not enough staffing, male staffing in Mount Vernon School Districts, which shouldn't suffice because the money's there. So I'm not the only one whose child's being failed. I can see it, it's in our communities. But you got to realize is I'm a product of the Mount Vernon School District, was in the special education, but I now give back to my community. When you fail these special education students, they can do the adverse to the community, and not because they want to, but because they have no resources. They should be getting some type of home economics. They should be taught how to balance a checkbook. You know, they should be taught how to cook, clean, all of these things that they don't have. So if you keep passing them from grade to grade to grade to grade, they become grown people like we are with zero resources, and they only act out. So I know I speak for a bunch of people, but like I said, I work for the water department. I put my city on my back every day and give my service. I expect the school district to do the same for my child and everybody else's child. That's all I have to say.
Our next speaker is John Gallagher.
Good evening, board members, school administrators. My name is John Gallagher. I have not been here in a long time, as you know. I recognize most of the faces on the board. There's probably one or two that don't know me that well. And you know that I always come here to talk about financing and school results of what we put into the school, what we pay into the school, what efforts we put in to make sure that our children are the best products that come out of the school district. With regards to financing, I think we can all agree tonight, everybody in this room, that Mount Vernon is not a very rich community. As a matter of fact, we're probably the poorest community in New York State. If not, we're certainly in the bottom top three. So therefore, we, as a school board and a city, have to look at how we spend our money to make sure that we're spending our money correctly, accurately. You people that are sit on the board were elected by the public to be stewards of what's going on with our money. And it's important that you do that job. One of my topics tonight was, and I did hear it, and I'm not so sure whether or not I've got the right explanation from the school administration here about the cost of what it was to refurbish superintendent's office. Now, the rumor that was going around was that it was $250,000. He has come out tonight and said that it was around $57,000. No work should have been done on that office unless every single member on that board agreed to it, or at least they had a majority, I should say. Let me take that back, at least a majority. So whether it was $57,000 or whether it was $250,000, and I intend to find out what the true story is by foiling for the information because I really like to know what the cost was to do that. If it's $250,000, ladies and gentlemen, you can build a house with that. If it's $57,000, that's a lot of money also. Having said that, I realize that, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be done in the school district. We bonded for $120 million a couple of years ago. Prior to that, a few years prior to that, we bonded for $20 million. And prior to that, we bonded for $8 million. And I know that a lot of this money was not spent properly. How do I know? Well, I can give you some facts because, number one, I live right across the street from Pennington. And there was one day there that I saw the construction workers starting to get out their jackhammers and starting to tear up the sidewalk on Devonian Avenue, on the school side. So I went over to them. I said, "Guys, what are you doing? We're going to tear up the whole sidewalk." I looked at the sidewalk. I walk on that sidewalk every day, ladies and gentlemen. There's nothing wrong with it, nothing wrong with it, zero. So I called the Buildings and Grounds superintendent, and I had him come over and take a look at it. And he looked at it, and he said, "You're right. That shouldn't have been done. I don't know why it was being done." Well, the question I'm going to bring out to everybody here tonight, and certainly to the board, is, did we all look at these change orders that go on? That's where all the money is made with the contractors, okay? People come in, they bid for a certain amount of money at a job, then all of a sudden, there's change orders, which cost a lot of money to the public. Now, what I wanted to say to you was, I was at a meeting here about a year and a half ago, and I sat in a meeting and I listened to the administrators of the school district talking about the request for change orders. And I made a comment that night. I said, "Wait a minute. Why do we have so many change orders? Why do we..." Unless it's an emergency, unless it's really required, you don't need these change orders because it's a way developers, contractors, make more money out of the taxpayer dollars. I suggest that you do not think about going out to doing another bond until we've taken a real hard look at it. Once again, you are all stewards of our money, taxpayers, and that's everybody, whether you're a property owner or a resident or a tenant. You pay taxes because when you get money for...
Mr. Gallagher.
Yeah, I'll be wrapping up. When you get money for buildings and whatnot, it comes out of everybody's pocket. So please be careful when you do that. And let's really find out what's going on in this district money-wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Our next speaker is Shawna Holmes. Shawna Holmes. Ms. Holmes? Our next speaker is Nikisa Woodson.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm concerned about Cecil H. Parker. We're in the third week of school. There's no seventh grade math teacher. It's a, seventh grade is a state test year. There is no careers teacher. She introduced herself and has since disappeared. I spoke to Ms. Green about this. We still don't have a teacher. The careers, my daughter is an A student, not an AB student, an A student. That's not going to translate in the real world when you have no, she's not learning anything. So you could give her As all day long if she doesn't have a curriculum. It's ridiculous. And then she had a Spanish assignment due on Friday. She's one of two students that handed it in. This is the level of accountability at Cecil H. Parker. Where is she going to compete at in the world when you're not teaching her anything there? This is, I just, it baffles me what goes on there. They were letting my daughter out on Sixth Avenue. Have y'all seen, I mean, excuse me, Fifth Avenue? We all know what Fifth Avenue is. It runs from the Bronx all the way here. We should not be letting students out on Fifth Avenue. Cecil H. Parker needs, I don't know if it needs oversight. I don't know about the politics, but it's not good enough for my daughter. So I need answers. I need a teacher. I don't even need any answers. I need a teacher that's teaching the curriculum so that she can pass the test and compete in the real world. That's it. That's it. And I just noticed that y'all have been using this buzzword lately. You just started using it. The South Side schools are not the same as the North Side schools because I'm a product of the North Side school. It's not okay. I don't care about anything else that goes on here, but my daughter will not be failed. It ain't going to happen on my watch. So y'all need to get it together, pull it together, do whatever you have to do. Stop putting in the orders that he's talking about unless you get a math teacher over there. So that's all I have to say. I'm expecting by the end of next week, we'll have a math teacher teaching the curriculum. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Barbara DeGeorge. Our next speaker is Greg Bonaparte.
Hello. So I have a statement. A few years ago, I met with Barbara DeGeorge. She had to leave. She told me about the horrors happening at Williams Elementary School, which was rat-infested, staircases were crumbling, the bathrooms were broken, it was a disgusting cafeteria, and the playground was roped off like it was a crime scene. Parker School is also very shameful. She called me. I called my wife, Adrienne, and we immediately went over to Williams School. And I was appalled. My wife was appalled. She contacted the administration, Ken Silver, and that's when some of the work was done. Williams School has always been a mess. It's still a mess. I've been sending pictures to the board, and nothing gets done. Parker School doesn't even have a playground, nothing for kids to play with. Yet, when Penny... Yet, when Pennington was done, when they had to remove the playground to do work, they put a temporary playground for a lot of money. Parker School has no playground. Now, if you want to talk about the superintendent's office, that was brought up to the board. Nobody disputed that amount, now all of a sudden, it's a different amount. Children who don't receive mandated services, they do. My grandson doesn't get life skills. People already sent letters, they don't receive mandated services. Social workers were let go, there were four black social workers who were let go in June, yet the superintendent kept a white special service supervisor who had a lawsuit against her in New York City and another one in Mount Vernon for racial discrimination. I spoke to him, I spoke to the board, and it wasn't until it hit the paper months later that that person was let go. Changing of evaluations, I sent letters of former social workers who left the school district because they refused to change student evaluations. You have those letters, no one contacted these people. We're talking about civil service, there are a lot of people who, when you want to keep somebody, you change their test, and you get them in this district. I don't want to mention names, but you change a test of one of our head department people. And that department is a mess. They have these purple cleaning things that they use in all the schools. I had a teacher call me today complaining about they're unlabeled. We don't know what these kids are being, uh, being around, whatever chemical is not in there, yet you have somebody in the rubber room for using those same chemicals and trumped Change orders, they're inflated. The district is privatizing, we had 14 painters, we're down to one. Now we could send those services out, and it seems like people are making money.
Mr. Bonaparte?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President Saunders, Distinguished and the Honorable Board Members, and Dr. Hamilton, I sincerely appreciate this time that has been allotted to me. Having sat for 10 years where you now sit, I fully and completely understand the awesome responsibility that you have to craft policy for the best educational services to be provided for the children of Mount Vernon. I say thank you. In today's climate, which is equally as important, is the safety and the health of our students. I commend you for that. But there's a third responsibility that you have, that I want to spend the remainder of my time to discuss. I want to segment that, let me repeat, I'm segmenting my comments to this third topic. And that is, you have a fiduciary responsibility. And the city of Mount Vernon, it's beyond making sure that the budget is balanced, it's beyond making sure that the checkbook is balanced. Your fiduciary responsibility extends to providing economic opportunity for this community. Unfortunately, the perception that exists throughout the city of Mount Vernon, I have to give you a failing grade. The evidence is compelling. On a daily basis, I drove by Mandela Zalikoff's school while the repairs were going on. While those renovations were taking place, the workforce did not at all reflect the complexion of this community.
Oh, hello.
You gotta get a failing grade. When you look beyond, and again, it's incumbent upon you, because of Mount Vernon, New York requires, the citizens require, that you take that extra effort in reaching out to local businesses, particularly minority and women-owned businesses. We have to do a better job. Dr. Hamilton tonight stated, he stated, that the board, it's not his responsibility, it's your responsibility. We elected you, it's your responsibility to come out with policy, with policy that will have a vigorous and an aggressive approach to the inclusion of all businesses in the city of Mount Vernon, and again, particularly minority and women-owned businesses. Having served this community as the mayor, having served this community for a number of years in the legislature, I offer to you my services at no cost. I offer to you my expertise in crafting policy, policy. And don't hide behind what the state says. Come out with Mount Vernon's Board of Education policy for inclusion of minority and women-owned businesses. I know that you will, I know each of you, please feel free to call me, and I'll be more than happy to offer my services.
Our next speaker is Richard Thomas.
I just would like to extend an apology to former Mayor Clinton Young, it was the Honorable Clinton Young, and we're welcoming the Honorable Richard Thomas to the mic.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Young, and Mayor Patterson Howard is here as well, and if she'd like to talk, you know, I'll yield the time if she wants to talk right now. No? You want to talk now? I can't. Oh, okay, all right, hey, just, there you go, respect is respect. Respect is respect. Thank you, board, thank you, Mount Vernon, thank you, superintendent, I know it's a complicated time, especially with COVID complicating matters. I'm here tonight as a person that just wants to see everybody, see our city, see our school district succeed. Creation is far more difficult than destruction, and it is easy to criticize, it's easy to point fingers and cast blame, but when you point the finger three, they'll point it right back at you. So, in echoing what Mayor Young said, I too offer my expertise, having been a product of the school district, having gone on to NYU on a full academic scholarship, London School of Economics, Harvard, and NYU Stern School of Business, be more than happy to offer some feedback and thoughts on what we can do to make a bigger difference in the lives of our children. As you know, that there's a lot of resources available due to COVID monies, I'm happy to hear the priority of trying to bring in more MWBEs, minority women-owned businesses, especially from Mount Vernon, which we need. But one thing that I think that can be created is a conversation, a conversation around what the superintendent said last week, which really piqued my interest, which was, how do we get, now, this is an age group that I don't belong to, but I'm excited about it, because one day I hope to be age group 55 and over to pay a different tax rate toward the school district. I think that's a great segue into what we can do to help lower the burden of school taxes for our seniors in the community, the same way we can craft our own Mount Vernon policy to deal with the MWBE inclusion and participation. I think that's a stellar idea to think about and rethink, how do we fund the school district? Because COVID has really changed the economy. The last part, I would say, I think is an opportunity that we can seize, is using possibly COVID monies or just pure community interest. We really need youth sports revived at the schools. If there's something that can be done about teaching life skills, or at least giving our kids something else to do that's more constructive, I know there are a lot of programs out there, but there has to be a greater appreciation for some of these other programs that are offered and available, like Coach Hall, who teaches track and field out of the parking lot at Target. We know that's not the ideal place for it, hopefully, there can be a greater collaboration between organizations like Coach Hall's, who produced, you know, and contributed to Deja Stevens and Rod Benjamin. So these are our programs that will prevent a David Hardy, as what Mr. Murray said at the proceeding a couple of weeks ago when Mr. Hardy was sentenced. He missed an opportunity to really grab a hold of this young person that really needed some love. So my ask tonight is to show more love. As hard as it is, neighbors fight, siblings fight, I mean, we here tonight, ready to fight over something we don't even know what we fighting about. But my hope is that we fight for the right thing, which is fixing and addressing the problems that we can fix, take one step at a time, and incrementally build on the success that we've seen here in the school district. And it has come a long way, I give commendations to the superintendent, who filled some big shoes, and the board, which has gone through its own tumultuous turbulence in many respects, some of which I don't take any credit for. But under the respect, I, you know, with all due respect, I do sincerely hope that our school district will continue to be successful and become more successful as we go forward. And I look forward to partnering with Mayor Young, Mayor Patterson Howard, Mayor Davis, all those here tonight to make Mount Vernon rise again. Thank you, guys, and good luck.
Our next speaker is our current mayor, the Honorable Sean Patterson Howard.
Good evening, Superintendent Hamilton, to the Board of Trustees. So I'm not here to fight tonight. That's something we'll do, you know, offline, and it's not fight, it's finding ways to work together. We serve one tax base, we serve one community, and I think there are so many opportunities for us to partner during school hours, after-school hours, on everything from school safety, community safety, providing our students with a safety net during out-of-school hours, partnering more with the Youth Bureau, the recreation, community programs, to ensure that we have full access to the school buildings, so that we're not kind of taxed twice on buildings that we are already supporting, to be open. Our kids need a lot, and we know that you have them between the hours of around 8:00 to 3:00, and you have them somewhat for after-school also. But we have to find a way to build a greater bridge to making sure that there is equity in education all throughout the city. You know, look, I hear it as mayor, North Side, South Side, this is what we're receiving. There are plenty of opportunities for us to begin to work together, to find solutions. I look forward to having those conversations with you. Dr. Hamilton and I have started some conversations, but I think there's opportunities to have much more rigorous conversation, to sit down and make sure that our tax dollars are being spent well in every arena. Yes, and people have said, you've said before, yes, the school district does get the lion's share of the tax dollars for the city, and we just have to find a way to make sure that they're being used well, that the services that, I'll just say, in one instance, SROs, because that was something that was recently put out by the school district concerning safety in schools. And I am here to tell you that we absolutely are in support of SROs being in the schools, but it is not an expense that the city can take on its back. In every municipality that has SROs in this region, it is an intermunicipality agreement, where the school district pays for those services. We are more than willing to work with you on that. As you know, we have a shortage right now, and in order to have a sustained program like that in the school district, which we know benefits our young people, we know that violence happens in the schools, it falls out into the community, violence happens in the community, it falls back into the schools, and so we have to work together. We are separate governments, but we are governing and serving the same community. So I am looking forward to having greater discussion and partnership with the school district, and working with our community to make sure that our children are safe, that our schools are ready to serve our children at the level they deserve to be served at, and that there is equity straight throughout the city. So I look forward to that discussion. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our next speaker is Dwayne Murray.
My name is Dwayne Murray, and I'm an assistant coach with the Mount Vernon High School varsity basketball team, as well as the program director of the Mount Vernon Junior Knights. There's a lot I could say to you tonight regarding my experiences with the special ed department of this district. I could tell you about my very first experience as a parent liaison to the special ed department at the high school, walking into the sped office conference room to see confidential files unsecured all over the room. I could tell you about my experience being called to appear as a witness on behalf of the district in a lawsuit regarding a young woman within the Special Education Department's care who was raped as a result of incompetence and negligence, and how I ultimately was treated as a hostile witness by district lawyers as a result of a letter I wrote to then-acting Superintendent Bennett Conroy about the mess I found at the sped department at the high school, and my questioning on why they were hell-bent on trying to fire the very person who actually cleaned it up. It should be noted that in that lawsuit, the jury awarded the young woman $28 million. Instead, I want to tell you about what I heard at the U.S. Federal Courthouse in White Plains last month at the sentencing hearing of David Hardy. David Hardy was convicted and sentenced for the killing of former Graham Elementary School student Shamoya McKenzie. David Hardy's attorney chronicled every step of David Hardy's time while a student in this district, and the failure of the district to help his mother get her son the help he needed. Hardy's attorney's point was, given his being diagnosed with a mental health condition, the district's special ed department had failed him. Now, the cynical among us can simply chalk that up to an attorney who's doing everything they can to represent their client, but when one considers the actions and inactions over the years by this department, I submit to you that simply being cynical is a cop-out. There's a reason why all these folks have interests in the Special Education Department. There's a reason why political rivals have put down their differences to join this effort to demand more than just saying, "We're looking into it." We need action to clean up this department now. For me, it's wondering why this district continues, continually runs out or loses good talent. I mentioned earlier about a letter I wrote regarding why the district was trying to fire then-supervisor of Special Ed at Mount Vernon High School after cleaning up that department. The person's name is Darra Joseph. She was set up and run out of this district on trumped-up charges by then-director of Special Ed Education. Where is she now? She's the Director of Special Education for the New Rochelle Special Education Department, excuse me, I just lost my thing. Receiving commendations for exemplary work, you don't have to take my word for it, simply ask one of the New Rochelle Special Education Parent Teachers Association, SEPTA, and here's the kicker, Ms. Joseph is doing amazing work with former Mount Vernon Special Education staff...
Mr. Murray, please don't mention her name.
Yes, sorry. Which begs the question, what is going on at the district's Human Resources Department? I've worked in labor relations on the union side for years, HR department's number-one customers are its employees. So can someone explain to me how this department can run out talented folk in this district on one end, yet hire an employee who was not only sued for discriminatory practices in New York prior to being here, but allegedly sued for similar practices while here? We simply cannot wait for the next superintendent or next board election, justifying ourselves at this same very frustrating place again. We need a win now, with this superintendent, with this board. Mount Vernon, I'll leave you with this question and challenge. Why can't we have a SEPTA, Special Education Parent Teachers Association, right here in Mount Vernon? Complaining isn't enough. We have more than enough current and former parents of students with disabilities in this city to galvanize our voices and hold that department accountable right now. Yes, we need the board to get to work, but we must do our part. Let's develop a Special Education Parent Teacher Association right here, right now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amisa Vincent. Our next speaker is Cynthia Crenshaw.
Good evening, Mount Vernon. I'm representing Parker Elementary School. At Parker, we have approximately five rooms that need repairs. One particular room is the PTA resource, where the ceiling has failed, and that's where I work as the PTA president. I was told that the room was secure, but I can't sit there while a ceiling over my head and I see pieces hanging down. That's just not going to happen. Also, the south-side hallway entrance is still in need of repairs, and that's been going on for three years. What's the status of the girls' bathroom renovation? I was told that we were on the list. The kindergarten and the pre-K playground area cannot be used. The swings and sides are extremely dirty. The walkway to the playground is cracked up, and the grass needs to be cut. This area is a nice area, but it is totally useless to the population of students that can use it. Who is responsible for maintaining the weeds around the playground area? We have missing separation glasses on the students' desks that separates the kids because of COVID. One class does not have any glass, and in that class, I think it's about maybe 20-some students. Another issue is, why is our children paying $600 a year for bus service? New Rochelle pays $115 for five months because the board subsidized the cost. Yonkers is also, is a reduced cost. The New York City kids' rice was free all over the five boroughs. There's approximately eight to 10 new constructions in Mount Vernon. The planning department cannot tell us if these buildings are on the pilot program. I was directed to, directed to the tax department, they can't say. The controller says the school has all the taxes turned over to them. I even contacted the mayor to answer this question, but no one has called me back from that office. If the board, if this board has given the addresses of the new buildings and recent buildings that came up in two to three years, will you be able to tell us if those people are on the pilot program and not paying their share of school taxes? If these tax questions are not answered truthfully, the next step is we will be seeking seven on outside, which seems to be very successful in getting answers. We pay too much taxes for our children to be paying $600. And as someone previously stated, this is a poor district. That is why so many kids are walking to school. And our taxes went up, we have all these buildings going up in Mount Vernon, why can't our students be subsidized also? Unfortunately, I don't want to waste your time, while I will be coming at every meeting until some of these are clear or we are given an accurate ETA. And one more thing to the superintendent, I must say personally, Superintendent, that I do feel that you are interested in the school, in the students. I know personally that you did help Parker out in a couple of situations with our students, and I thank you for that. But as far as these taxes go, we have to do something about it. It shouldn't be all going for administrative purposes, I don't know if it is, but our kids should be subsidized. They should not have to pay $600 per year to get to Mount Vernon High School. That is why so many kids are walking to the high school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Monroe.
Greetings, Honorable Trustees, greetings, community. I had a variety of things I was going to come to say today, but I don't think I'll need to say most of them. My elder honorable mayor, former mayor Young, actually eloquently summarized what I think needs to be said in criticism. So I'm basically here to stand in solidarity with my neighbors and some of the various statements, like Brother Born Apart, that spoke about the challenges of his student. But I'd like to kind of say, in kind of collective solidarity with those statements, that I've been here before, many of those statements reflect, really, in consequence and summary, many of the things I've said in analysis, going on a decade now. I've been acting, and frankly, not the only person, but I've joined other people in asking for African-centered curricula to reflect the population of the student body, but not for political reasons, just for justice, just for truth. I was pretty much ignored a couple of times, I was spoken down to kind of condescendingly by leadership, and that's really not a problem for me. I was graciously given time by trustee Turnquist Jones, with some other educators, to actually talk about what was going to happen. I think that was, was it June trustee? I can't remember, you'll jog my memory if you could. I haven't heard any follow-up on that, though. I have heard some language regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, that is not a curricula for African children. But I understand that this is a good buzzword for the day. But I'm not here for buzzwords, I'm not even here to speak more specifically to the weaknesses of the district. I think one of the points of solidarity I stood with when I saw this posted flyer that many of the gunmen in the streets are going to be, I don't have the language it said, basically, stop many, stop gunmen in the streets from being products of a failed school system. I think that says volumes. I'd like to qualify it, though, because gunmen are, people who do criminal activities are not the only products of a failed school system. Even successful graduates with straight A's and master's degrees are also failed students of a failed colonial system, because the system teaches colonialism and exploitation. So you can be Bill Gates, Jeff Bezos, you can be a straight A student and still be a failed human being. We don't want failed human beings in Mount Vernon. In 2021, it's no time to argue what that means to be a successful student. You don't have to just have straight A's, you need to not just compete in the world with a good job either. You need to actually meet the human needs that government won't. It's our school district's job to do that. I understand that this school district is the product of a political environment, the body politic in Mount Vernon is pretty much conservative, not necessarily progressive, I get that. Quite frankly, I have a statement to my community, I'll say before I wrap, but the only statement I'll say to the leadership, and this is to echo what Mayor Young has said, our policymakers need to take accountability and responsibility for what our children need to reflect. Our children need to reflect the needs of humanity, black and white children, obviously. I don't have any fancy degrees or offerings or services offered like my leadership. I know who does, though, doctors, Cheyenne de Giop, Joseph Ben Yacunan, Francis Quest Welson, Amos Wilson. These are doctors, sociologists, psychologists, anthropologists, people who have much, most of them are ancestors now, but the point is they have much to offer in curricula that could be reflected in what you teach our children, black and white children. To our community, I need to ask you to be a little more engaged, a little more progressive. I understand that we in the community cannot ask much of a school district that sits in its headquarters on a street named after Christopher Columbus. With a school named after Christopher Columbus, in an era where progressive communities are ripping Christopher Columbus statues off their pedestals-
Mr. Monroe, can you wrap it up, please?
I just ask, we reflect the needs of the moment, we rise to the occasion, all of us, leadership and my neighbors in general. God bless.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lorna Kirwin.
Good evening, trustees, Superintendent, and the community. So I'm here to speak about Trop Hagen and the activities that goes on at Trop Hagen after hours. About two weeks ago, two students were coming from, I think, I'm thinking that it was football practice at Trop Hagen. And two, the two students was throwing rocks going through the neighborhood. They got to my house, and they broke my windows, just merely missing my daughter and I, as we were sitting there previously, about five minutes prior to those rocks coming through the windows, watching television. Now, anyone who knows me knows that I'm a big advocate for children and extra curriculum, and, you know, let them get their feet wet in any sports whatsoever. However, when it infringe on my comfort of living, I have a problem with that. So I'm here to ask the superintendent and the trustees to find out what activities goes on at Trop Hagen on the weekends, because this was a Saturday afternoon. Apparently, whatever football practice they had, the kids were all left to then roam the neighborhood. And then this is what happened to my house. Now, this is a big problem for me, because then I have to foot that bill, the parents are not going to repair my expensive window. And so I'm just asking if you could monitor what goes on at these, on these school grounds after hours, because then it's wrecking the neighborhood. And I just can't have that, especially just merely missing my daughter and I. Now, she, my daughter, Antonia, does not even want to go back and sit on that couch, because she's scared that a rock is going to come through the window. So I'm here to ask, to please, if there's football practice, tennis practice, because I see kids go there for tennis on Sunday mornings, to please have the coaches release the children in the, in the parents, to the parents, rather, as opposed to have them roam the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Selma Belfour.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I've been living in Mount Vernon for 30 years. And what is happening in Trop Hagen School, in the park, grown men riding on, swinging on the children's playground. There is also a car sex motel on the same street as the school. My neighbor called me, she said, "Selma, what is happening? People are lining up in the night, having sex in cars next to the school. Grown men sitting in the park all night, playing loud music and smoking and all that thing, in Trop Hagen School. That's what's going on. We don't have any representation. We need a police person to pass by." My neighbor said, "I've been living here for 37 years, and I want to move, Selma, because it's ridiculous." Trop Hagen does not have any, any support for kids after 18 years old. I mean, not even, I'm sorry, Trop Hagen, Mount Vernon. 18-year-old were going into my property in the Bronx to practice dancing and singing with my nephew. All the schools are closed for them, nothing at all. I've been complaining about that for years. My nephew physically had to take Mount Vernon kids and bring them to the Bronx in my property so that they could do some form of exercise, dancing, so they're not on the street killing and fighting with people. That's wrong. I spoke to Congressman Bowman, and I told him, "Congressman Bowman, I need help from Mount Vernon in that capacity. Let us have a play area, a dance area, an outlet for these kids." Not because when you get older, nobody wants to adopt you, that's what's happening in Mount Vernon. They're like, they say, "Older kids are hard to adopt." Mount Vernon forgets about them. All the school building, designate something, something for those kids. I told, my husband said, "No, I don't want them anymore, because if anything happens, they're going to sue me." So my nephew had to give up the whole program, because there is nowhere in Mount Vernon that provide for kids over 18, nowhere. And they're on the street now. And next thing, Dr. Hamilton, I don't have anything against you, but I get to not like something you did to me. I came to your office and made a complaint to you. My daughter got a job in Longfellow, not Longfellow, but that primary school, elementary school. She bought her clothes, she took her physical, her fingerprint, and it was a small job, just about $15 a suit. And when, two days before she started the job, they called and said, "Oh, by the way, you don't get the job anymore." I went to Dr. Hamilton and asked him why that happened. He said, "Oh, definitely, I'm going to get back to you within a few days." Dr. Hamilton, two years now, I'm still waiting on you. Two years now, I'm still waiting for an answer, why that happened. I raised five kids in Mount Vernon. My kids were basketball players in Mount Vernon High School, bringing joy, championship to Mount Vernon. And that's what happened to my daughter. And my kids look at me, they say, "Mommy, that's what we were trying to tell you. Mount Vernon don't care about people employing here, it's one of the strangers and foreigners they bring here, not Mount Vernon children." And that got to stop. Thank you.
Thomas Keller.
What's that? By the way, can I cede any of my time to someone else? John, do you want to take any of my time?
No.
No, they're not registered.
Greg? No, all right. I don't have too much to say, because it's been covered. These are serious allegations. I wouldn't be here tonight unless I got this email from John D. I think these allegations should be investigated. It's probably too much of a job for trustees. And Ingraham Smith is probably compromised, because they have a contract with the district. Maybe an outside attorney, doesn't live in Mount Vernon, should do this. And as far as diplomas go, I brought this up a few years ago.
Keep talking, Mr. Keller, please.
It's still working? Okay. There's a difference between a regent's diploma and a local diploma. And a local diploma is better than no diploma, but I think we should break it out and try to strive for more regent diplomas. Change orders, these have been covered. I happen to be on the Budget Committee, probably goes back approximately 10 years, I think it started with Judith Johnson, it's continued under Superintendent Hamilton, may even gone back to Brenda Smith. But anyway, I knew nothing about these change orders until it became an issue now. Somebody bids $50,000, somebody bids $45,000, $45,000 gets the job, and then change orders come in, and all of a sudden, it's well over $50,000. I mean, I don't know, internal audit should be looking at this, probably not the external audits, but I don't know. This has got to be looked at. And as far as money for the district, back, probably before Brenda Smith was the superintendent, we had about 10,500 students in the system. Now it's about 7,500, give or take 500. And yet, you know, the budget keeps going up and up and up every year. Maybe not every year, maybe a million or two million, but, you know, we're spending much, much more on students than in the past. I'm a fiscal conservative, I think there's enough money from Albany every year, we don't need tax increases with a flat or declining enrollment. I didn't vote for the, on the Budget Committee, I was in the minority, I didn't vote for the tax increase last year. And about three years ago, there was another tax increase, I voted against it- And about three years ago, there was another tax increase, I voted against it. We got to do a better job of spending our money. And that's all I have to say.
Our next speaker is Bishop C. Nathan Edwards.
As you get older, you try to minimize your footsteps. I'm Bishop C. Nathan, that was the pastor of Friendship Worship Center for the past 33 years I've been in this community. I am a transplant. The first thing I want to say about Mount Vernon is that this is a great community despite all of the challenges that we have confronted with over the years. My baby was six months years old when I came here. I raised up both of my child, my daughter and my son. They went to the educational system. Doctor B. over there knew our children. And both of them are extremely accomplished because there was collaboration between the parent, the school, the houses of worship, and not-for-profits. Dr. Hamilton, you have done an extraordinary job over the years with what you've been dealt. When you came to this community seven years, there was great despair, there was hopelessness. It was a community without a vision. And the Bible said, "Without a vision, the people perish." The past seven years, despite all of the naysayers, despite all the criticism, you forged ahead. There is a silent majority that want to tell you thank you and don't see you as a liar, a schemer, a trickster. Your work of keeping the children faith first and staying out of the political minutia of this community have helped us to get us to this point. That is not to say that we don't have problems. That is not to say that we don't have challenges. That is not to say that the reticence of this community, the concerns that they lift should be diminished and dismissed. There's two things that bother me. First is the misinformation. I'm here tonight because of misinformation. And the second thing that bothered me is no information. If I don't have information and don't have the accurate information, that makes me make judgments in ignorance. And a lot of people make a lot of statements without factual. I don't think that we are use taxpayer money to have investigations, which would cost us more money externally. I think there's enough honest members of our community with integrity that can investigate ourselves. Mount Vernon has produced some great leaders, and we've seen some tonight. Clinton Young, Richie Thomas, Sean Patterson. These were product of Mount Vernon. So Mount Vernon is not all bad, and it has not been led by all bad people like some people tried to project in the community. Let's stop be political and stop beating up on people because words hurt people. Words cause people to lose passion for what they're doing. I pray for you, Superintendent, this board, and I want to thank you because this is a thankless job that you call to do, and you have to make judgment calls. And sometimes they're questionable, and sometimes we like them, and sometimes we don't. But that's why you're in power. May the Lord bless each one of you as you continue to serve our community. And you have my support as long as you write. But if I ever find anyone you're wrong, just like I'm echoing positive things, I'd be the first one to give you hell. God bless you.
That concludes public speaking. Dr. Hamilton will make some comments. Is Mr. Copeland, Mr. Copeland is standing up. Did Mr. Copeland stand up to speak? Mr. Copeland, you can go ahead and speak, I'm sorry. We apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Been a long time since I was here. Y'all forgot about Ray Copeland. Somebody said never, amen. For those that remember Ray Copeland. I want to...
Can you move closer to the mic so we can hear you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I, I too, I was sitting here, I'm watching all these heavyweights come up to speak. And it brought back a lot of memories for those people that've been in the trenches for a long time. Amen. They've been in the trenches a long time, fighting for this district, fighting for our childrens. And it doesn't seem to have no way of ending. Which means, regardless who you vote for, or who you put on that stage, you got to stay behind them. Don't put them up there and leave them. it was hell in this district. Why? Because the people that was operating it at that time was operating a business for themselves and their families. And that rainbow of trustees up here wasn't like that. And we saw a great need to change it. And this room here, school board meeting supposed to turn out at 10 o'clock. 1 o'clock, we still here fighting. The superintendent and the school board trustees announced the meeting is over. We said, "Not yet. We got work to do." And we still fighting tonight. I use the word fighting because I like to fight. Anything worth fighting for, including me. Even if it means barking, taking our children out of the district, out of school like we did in 1996. I hope it don't have to happen again. Some of the things that I heard tonight really got me shaken up. I don't know what to say. Because if I say something, I may say the wrong thing, not having evidence. But I'm nervous and I'm shaking. Why are you shaking, Copeland? Because I fought like hell to get you all up there. Guns pointed at my face, standing right over there. Shut up, Copeland, sit down, or we'll kill you. Call the cops on Copeland for speaking. Put the cuffs on me for speaking. I'm nervous. I'm old. And I ask myself, "You're tired, Copeland, but you can't stop. You have to fight on." So I'm here tonight trying to see how much energy do I have left. A lot of times I get weak, but I have to fight on. Fight. After the cops put the cuffs on me, standing right over there.
Mr. Copeland, can you wrap it up?
Community.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you wrap it up now?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
We got plenty of time.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. I'm old and I talk slow.
I know.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Somebody need to hear. After they put the cuffs on me over that night, and it was leading me out, and the community told the cops to take the cuffs off of me. And they gathered around me. The cops took the cuffs off of me, only because I was trying to make things better. 1 o'clock in the morning, we fighting to get a better superintendent than William that had been here for so long. Dr. Hamilton, there's nothing negative I can say about you because I don't know. If I said anything negative, I'll be kissing. That would not be nice. But you and I, let me just elaborate on what I signed up to speak about.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
I'm not quite finished. I signed up to speak about...
Mr. Copeland, you...
I signed up to speak about vocational education. If you would be so kind, a lot of people didn't show up to speak, which gave us more time. Do you agree?
I will give you some more time.
Thank you so much. You're so kind. Now...
I'm giving him, he's getting time.
Now, vocational education. I do, I hope that, is there vocational education in progress in place?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The reason why I fight so hard to try to give vocational education in this district because book knowledge is not for everybody. I'm a true example. I was a building contractor for 60 years, but I don't have book knowledge. But I can build anything. So here in Mount Vernon, under Mayor Davis, I was VP Deputy Commissioner. And I had about 14 guys working under me. Because there's a lot of buildings in Mount Vernon that need repairing, Ms. Mayor. There's a lot of buildings in Mount Vernon that need to be repaired. And I was doing a very good job with those young boys, teaching them the trade. And as those people that come up before me tonight offering their service free, I too offer my service to the community, Ms. Mayor. This vocational training these guys, these people are getting in the district could be used to fix up some of these houses, and they can get firsthand experience. Firsthand experience, free. But you go knocking on different doors, you make different phone calls, the deaf ears, and nobody hear you. That need to stop. The same people that the young man spoke about, the one that has the A-plus average and doing well in school, graduate from major colleges, they have to come back to the real And that's where the problem begin. Because the ones that don't have that education can't compete. So he gonna take and he gonna steal, he gonna take what you got. We need to balance it. Everybody need to be educated some type of way. So when you come out of that Mount Vernon High School, if you don't have a book knowledge, you got to trade. I don't know the hours of where this is being taught at, but I would like to know. I would like to know where the hours and where it's being taught at, because I would like to visit it to see if I can contribute my knowledge to those young boys that needs a trade. And a lot of, and conclusion, closing up. I'm very skeptical about how and where I spend my money.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Yes. And...
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. That concludes public comment. Dr. Hamilton is going to answer some of the concerns from the community?
Yes. So firstly, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, for your indulgence and for your comments. I'd also like to say that I continue to be committed to solutions. We'll continue to work with the board and members of the community. It is true, we still have a lot to do, but we have to also acknowledge where we were. And growth is incremental, and we have to continue to be progressive in our efforts to educate our children. And I think we are on the cusp of really changing long-term outcomes for our students. I do think that there is a heartbeat in our community that really warrants considerable attention. There are two, actually. One is further partnerships with our city. I think there is tremendous opportunity there that we have to harness and take advantage of. As our mayor, Mayor Patterson Howard mentioned, we serve the same community, and we have the same goals in terms of making it a better place for our students and our citizens. And secondly, opportunity for minority businesses is real. And I think as we embark upon this next opportunity through some of our American Rescue Funds, there will be opportunities for some more work to be done in our buildings. I remain committed to working with members of our community so that I could first get a sense of who our partners are, who, what is your business? What is it that you do that the district may be able to partner with you on? So I remain open to developing that local minority business directory so that we have a directory of resources available that we can access when those opportunities arise. I have an open door policy. I am willing to sit down with anyone who wants to sit down and talk about solutions. We have a litany of problems, all school districts do, particularly in this time when we are working our way through the remnants of COVID. But nothing is unfixable. All things can be solved when people commit to working together, and I remain committed to doing that. I will be, I will continue to hold opportunities for community forums so I can hear your voices. But I do want to encourage you to come to be solution-driven, because I don't have all the answers, and I hope there is no expectation that I do. But together, I think we can solve a host of issues, past, issues I've inherited, issues that have continued under my tenure that we have not yet been able to address, and issues that are yet to be discovered that will continue to face our children. So I look forward to continued conversations, continued opportunities to move forward. I do want to thank all of our speakers for coming out, and I don't know whether to say we should be honored or blessed to have two, three of our, two of our former mayors and current mayor at our meeting. First time that's happened since I've been in the district. But I do want to thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts. And to all of our, all members of our community and clergy who came out this evening, I will work through the issues that you have. I will work through the issues that you have described.
Thank you. We're going to go into executive session?
Yes.
For what purpose?
We need a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of particular person or persons, current litigation, pending litigation, and third-party contract negotiations.
How long will it be?
Uh, 45?
An hour.
We have a motion?
Motion.
Second. We'll be back at 9:00.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, second.
Trustee Miller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Did you guys make a motion to return back from executive session? Motion to resume?
Dr., uh, Ms. Sorenson? There was the motion, we need a second.
Oh, second.
Okay.
Who's missing? Is everybody here?
Um, Melissa's.
Melissa's out.
Does Melissa? Yeah.
So we're going to do one committee report tonight, and then we'll save the rest for the next meeting. Is that okay with everyone?
I just want to say one quick thing.
Okay. All right. So going on to committee reports, trustee Sorenson?
Oh, yeah, mic's on, mic's on.
You didn't hear me? Sorry.
Check, check, check. Mic check.
Okay, so, um, special committee report, um, a special ed forum will take place on October 13th from 5:30 to 8 o'clock as a virtual event. After the presentation and Q and A, families will have the choice to join roundtable sessions in which they'll be, the topics are going to be addressed in these roundtables will be, you know, like, for example, increasing communication with games, they're going to have an opportunity to have a conversation with a special ed supervisor, and the student transition path to graduation and career opportunities. That's the report. That will be October 13th, virtually between 5:30 and 8 o'clock, and notices will be sent out to the parents and think, I think it will be posted on the, we're going to post it on the website, yeah, and the invitations on the website, and we also going to be sending notices out with the children.
And that's for any member of the community, right? Not just people who have special ed students and their families or... Yeah, anyone can listen in and attend.
Yeah. There's a QR code that'd be easy for individuals to access the event.
Mm-hmm.
And so all you have to do is just turn on your device and go to your camera, and then you scan it over the QR code, and you'll be able to access the Zoom link.
Next, trustee Miller?
Two things. One, Rick McCormick and I had a meeting with Final Site, who has given us a formal presentation to redo our website. It is absolutely amazing, comprehensive. I asked Dr. Gorman for green light since technology report's up to him, and he said it was fine to go and talk to BC about the money. So we're going to have a, I want to put together a very, very small presentation for the next board meeting, but there will be a resolution on the next, on the next agenda just to approve them to produce this new website and provide the services to support the website. It's probably going to take us three or four months to get the new website up and running. Secondly, as the audit committee met yesterday, yesterday, and we are going to be starting, we're going to be meeting with Rachel DePaul, and we're going to be talking about doing a audit into special ed, and we had a good suggestion from Amy Mozeli about an outside person who can help us because Mr. Tobin is, really doesn't have a lot of bandwidth because he's working with Tom Scapoli on another matter. So anyway, but we will be getting the special ed audit, which I've conferred with trustee Saunders on about what areas of inquiry we'd like to review. We'll be getting that underway in the next two to three weeks.
Thank you. That's it for committee meetings, for committee reports. Next, we'll go on to HR. Rick, you want to read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. We need a motion to, we need a motion to approve Human Resources Memorandum 44A and 44B dated October 5th, 2021. Trustee Miller?
Second.
Trustee McOwen. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye. I abstain due to technical difficulties, and I was not able to read the, all the resolutions.
Trustee, uh, trustee Sorenson abstains. Motion still carries. All right. We need a motion to approve Resolution 6.2, Authorization to Pay Staff for RTI Design Teams at All K-8 Schools. By 6.2? 6.2.
Second.
All in favor?
I had a question. Can I just be reminded why the number of people on the teams is different from school to school? Why do some have three or four and some have seven or eight or nine? We should get him a microphone. Sorry, nobody can hear your answer.
We leave the autonomy to the principals based on their need, within reason, obviously. But it's, you saw that whole description on their, what they need to do. So they have different populations that are being serviced by RTI, the amount of kids they are assessing and looking at putting into practice.
I see.
It's relatively consistent, I believe.
No, and I, yeah, no, I, thank you, that answered my question. For example, I see there's extra ENL teachers on the team at Hamilton, but that makes sense based on, yes, demographics, yes, understood. No further questions?
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Motion carries. Trustee Sorenson abstains. We need a motion to approve Business Office Item Number 7.1, dated October 5th, 2021. Trustee Miller?
Second.
Trustee Saunders? Questions? Comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Trustee Sorenson abstains. Motion carries. Business Office 7.2, Authorization to Award Bid Number 2021 Waste Management Services Contract as Suburban Carding for the end of the 2021 school year and the 2122 school year. Is there a motion?
Second.
Trustee Red? Second. Questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Trustee Saunders opposes. Abstain?
Aye.
Trustee Sorenson abstains. Motion passes 7 to 1, with one nay and one abstention. Motion still carries. All right. Motion, uh, Resolution 7.3, Authorization for Bid Extensions. Be resolved that Delta Electric Renew Contracting and Restoration, Inc., New York Home Management, Home Maintenance Company, Inc., and FDM Enterprises, Inc., Picture Perfect Land Service, Inc., have their contracts extended through December 31st, 2021. Contingent on signing of the DEI attestation as developed by council, and that Delta Electric Renew Contracting and Restoration, Inc., New York Home Maintenance Company, Inc., FDM, FMD Enterprise, Inc., Picture Perfect Land Services, Inc., have their contracts extended through December 31st, 2021.
Yeah, that's a typo.
Yeah, I just fixed that.
Good.
Contingent on the signing of the DEI attestation as developed by council. Be it further resolved that all aforementioned contracts will go out to bid RFP before December 31st, 2021, with the revised DEI language clearly articulating district expectations as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Be it further resolved that the all aforementioned contracts will go out to bid before December with the, did I go in there twice? My apologies. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
I fixed it.
I just refreshed. It's still not fixed.
I haven't saved it. As soon as I save it, I will.
Okay. Okay, just checking.
All right, motion. I'm sorry, we can't hear down here. What were you just doing?
I'm just, I'm waiting for a motion.
Motion.
Did you guys fix further? Did further get repaired, fixed here? Because I'm pretty sure...
Second.
Further's not spelled that way. I don't...
Move the mic further from your mouth.
Got it.
Yeah, it's like, fur, 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 fur. Okay, we're all tired.
Okay, it is fixed. Nope, we need, we have a motion by Ms. Turnquist, and I have a second by...
All in favor?
No, there was a motion by Candace Sorenson, second by Turnquist.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. School Improvement 8.1, Authorization to Approve School Improvement Service Memorandum S22-8 dated October 5th, 2021. A motion?
Motion.
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Second, is trustee White? All those, uh, questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Trustee Sorenson abstains. Motion carries. 8.2, Authorization to Approve School Improvement Personnel Memorandum P22-4 dated October 5th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Trustee McOwen?
Second.
Trustee Patterson? All those in, oh, I'm sorry. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Trustee Sorenson abstains. Motion carries. Student Services Memorandum Number 6 dated October 5th, 2021. Is there a motion? Trustee Miller? Trustee Red? Nope, trustee, trustee Mitch. It's hard not to hear men's voices with the, we're going to separate you guys next week. Questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry, I'm sorry, abstain?
Aye.
Trustee Sorenson abstains. Motion carries. That concludes the resolutions, Madam President. Motion to adjourn, trustee Miller?
Second.
By trustee Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the public comment.